This is Works Section Order 602, 11/6/2018. And our first topic is an Equity Committee update, family engagement.
Okay, everybody. Thank you for your patience. My name is Yolanda Rivera. I think everybody here knows me right now. And we are pleased to be here again, sharing with you our next topic. We've been working on objective two, community engagement. And we feel especially well-prepared to talk about this. Our committee is not only comprised of family members and community members, but we have experts in the field of family and community engagement. So a quick overview today, we'll be talking about the power of family and community engagement, challenges to engagement and inclusion, and we'll be wrapping up with some guiding principles that we feel will be helpful. The power of family and community engagements. In one of our first discussions about family and community engagement, we deepened on our understanding that we not only want to be engaged, but that when schools become welcoming and inclusive, children tend to do much better in school, they stay longer in school, and they like school a lot more. This quotation came from a survey of the research literature out of which several approachments to engagement has come out. The key here is that the research shows that effective family and community engagement is a part of a broader strategy to improve student experience and outcomes. If we are serious about eliminating racial and ethnic disproportionality in the district, we must be serious about family and community engagement. I will hand it over to Sariah, who will talk a little bit more.
Hello. My name is Sariah. I am a new immigrant. I came here in 2016. I was a diversity visa lottery winner. Thank God. So I'm here to talk to you about the challenges to engagement and inclusion. So we at the Equity Committee, we identified a couple of issues that are so important to improve the engagement and inclusion. One of the things that I have to say is, I am not a problem. I am not a burden. I'm a valuable part of the community, and I want to be considered like that. Well, I often don't see myself in the eyes of others as someone who can be productive member of the community. I want to be a part of this community, and I want to play a good role in it. Please know that this sensibility comes through. It will take work, hard work, to change the culture. My second point is going to talk about ways, the ways and things that have always been done does not often include or engage me. People who live in Iowa City a long time often take it for granted that we all know what is happening and how things work. But many of us do not know how things like to happen. Just like the PTO, how does the PTO work? Or how students get into dance teams? For myself, I didn't know what's extracurricular. I just understood that a couple of weeks ago when I was kind of ashamed to ask about that when I asked one of my colleagues what that is, and they then told me what is extracurricular. We need to be more proactive to make sure our families and community members know what is going on. I'm going to give you a simple example of myself and my daughters. I took them to the rec center on one of the Fridays, as usual, for swimming. And all of a sudden, the downtown city was packed with people, a lot of parents taking their children on strollers or on the top of their necks. I didn't know what that was, and even my daughters were like, Mom, what's going on? It turned out that it was the homecoming parade. But we didn't know what that was. I had to go back and Google it, just to know what that was. Well, that is an institution in Iowa City, but one that newcomers, just like me, do not know what that was. Another example is the PTOs. We often do not feel like we are welcome to be part of the PTOs. We need to be invited, welcomed, and included. One of the reasons for that is culture. Simply, in our culture, we need to be invited. We cannot come just like that to a meeting. No, we feel like this is not okay. We don't have to do that. Well, as I said, we must be invited to participate in things. We do not assume we can just show up. Others of us might go, but the culture and climate of the events does not include us. They might be talking about things that, as I said, we do not even know what that is. For others, the work of the PTO is not interesting. The meetings sometimes do not engage the issues we are passionate about. I'm going to jump into point number four, because I think it's tied to the other points, and then I'll come back to point number three. We understand there are several initiatives that have either been tried out district-wise or individual schools, but the others do not continue more than a year or two, or they work in one school, but do not get shared with other schools. But fortunately, there are always good examples to be shared and followed. My children have attended Horn Elementary, and I still have one child there. At Horn, they do focus on inclusion. They do their best to communicate information we need to everyone. They reach out to all of us. They translate everything into different languages, be it Chinese, Arabic, French, or Swahili. They use all sorts of media, such as newsletters, emails, and the horn bust by the principal, Mrs. Cannon, and PHR. They consciously recruit new family members to engage, such as helping with translations. And they offer events that incorporate and celebrate the diversity of our school, like our International Night. I will give you an example of that. They even lobbied a couple of persons from our community. And what happened is, these persons from our community created a group in a software that we use, that is WhatsApp. And that made the International Night awesome, because it was not like, if you're going to bring this food, please make sure you are not going to bring the same thing. Make sure to be on time. Make sure to dress like our national dress. And it was excellent. It was super excellent. And yet, there are committee members whose children attend other schools or who have spoken with family members at other schools. We have never seen information translated into other languages, and we were never contacted by the school to engage. I also want to say that while something like translating information to other languages is critical for family members to get informed, it also signals that we are welcome in our schools, that our schools want us to be involved. I'm sorry for my accent, guys. English is my third language. I'm going to refer back to point number one, how schools reach out to family members can make us feel like our strengths are recognized, or it can make us feel like we are a burden. We know it is complicated. Cultural clash, even in my own life, I find myself sometimes thinking like an American and sometimes thinking like a Sudanese. The way we talk, the gender roles we play, all of the ways we experience each other come from our culture. And often, these cultures clash. Frankly, what most of us who are in the minority do is, we back off. We try to stay out of the spotlight, to stay in the shade, so we can live our lives and so we do not bring problems into our families and communities. Because when culture clash, it is our culture that is usually not the winner. The district can play a role in making sure effective initiatives are expanded. In order for all schools to do the kinds of things I experienced at Horn, we'll take commitment, expectations, knowledge, and resources. Centralizing the commitment, expectations, and support will make this norm in our district, not the exception. I'm coming back to point number three. We need to be much more proactive to recruit people to our school-based and district-based committees. We should reach out to family and community members to serve on our PTOs. We need our paraeducators, our teachers, and our administrators to mirror our community. We need staff in the schools. Our secretaries and other staff we encounter when we go to school need to reflect us and need to understand us. Representatives on the committee that you appoint must represent our community's diversity, such as the School Improvement Advisory Committee or the Calendar Committee. Even our own committees struggles with maintaining diversity, and we are working to clarify roles and expand our representation. It also means we may need to change the way we work, what time we need, how we organize our agendas, and the like. In the Equity Committee, we developed some guidelines, some guiding principles to achieve these goals. And you should be familiar with all of them. I'm only going to speak about the last two points. That is, our communities are diverse. We must know that. While the majority in Iowa City remains white, middle to upper-middle class residents who are from Iowa, or at least the U.S., we have residents here from all over the state, the nation, and the world. The Iowa City schools teach all of our children. It is critically important that we get to know our diverse communities as much as we can. By knowing one another, we can find mutual interest, common grounds, and new ways to engage one another. Family and community engagement must be a core function of the district. Because of this, though traditional schools do not necessarily consider working with families as centered to their work, we believe it is important that Iowa City does make family and community engagement a core function of the district. John Preston, former director of the Parent Involvement Department in the San Diego City School, says, "Don't make parent involvement part of the Public Relations or Communications Office, and don't bury it in the bureaucracy like the Federal Program Office. Put it close to the superintendent and on the instructional side of the organization." This means two things. It means we do not leave it up to chance how schools design their communication strategies, organize their events, and implement their programs. It also means we must provide guidance and support to our schools to carry out this important function. Finally, I can stand here and talk for five hours to highlight the need to raise the standard of communication between the schools and the district, and our minority communities and newcomers. And the five hours will never be enough. I'm going to leave the stage to Stephanie.
Hi. My name is Stephanie Van Hoozen. And thus far, you have heard there's a consistent, a positive, and convincing evidence that families have a major influence on their children's achievement. The literature supports that. The research for 20 years has supported that. And we all seem to agree that we have a great deal of diversity in our community. And this committee wants all schools to adopt the practices of some of the more successful schools in our community, schools like Horn, in ensuring that they reach out and invite in and celebrate all families and caregivers. And we believe it is critical that all activities be strength-based and culturally relevant, and also trauma-informed. While there are many strategies for achieving family and community engagement, we point out three key strategies for your consideration. First, linking all school-based activities to learning is key. Let me tell you a personal story, and I'm not particularly proud of it. But I am the first to admit that when I was working in the schools and with programs where we wanted big participation, I thought it was critical that we offer fun and enticing after-school and weekend activities to get families engaged. Movie nights seemed like a good idea. Then I took part in a series of trainings provided by the district where I was challenged to think about the importance of linking all school-based activities to learning. It was a study of family engagement and creating welcoming schools. What we did as a result, and what we learned, totally changed my worldview. Requiring a link to learning changed the level of engagement among families. It changed the way we think about families as the first teachers of children. And it changed the work of many staff at the district and building levels. And families came. We went from having 10 to 15 persons attend a math night or a reading night to having over 500 people attend and learn ways to have fun while improving students' achievement. And we honored parents as children's teachers in partnership with the district teachers. The trouble is, we did not take to scale these effective approaches to all buildings across the district. In order to do this, it requires coordination. While buildings do need some level of autonomy to implement the programs for their staff and families that their families are passionate about, they do need some expectation from the district that the guiding principles are being met through school activities. An example of effective practices that some of our schools have implemented, but that has not yet become district-wide practice is home visits. District teachers and/or student-family advocates at Twain and Wickham implemented home visits and found them to be as effective as the research suggested that they would be. Kirkwood and Hills Elementary also lists this service on their website. However, there are not many more schools that necessarily even would know about the power of these visits or how to effectively conduct them. The third strategy we offer is that the district expects to see family and community engagement as a component in each and every school's comprehensive school improvement plan, also known as the CSIPS. If principals are able to use their CSIP to help guide and support the work in the schools, having family and community engagement explicitly stated as an objective and providing guidance about effective activities, expected outcomes, and measures of success, this can be powerful. Write it into the plan. As for next steps, once again, we believe it is critical that you update the comprehensive equity plan. Family and community engagement is an outcome in the current plan, but it needs attention. Once you have an updated comprehensive equity plan, you must ask for annual progress updates. This is how people know what you value, if you're looking at it, and how they can demonstrate their progress. We want you to remember that diversity is not only critical in our engagement activities, but in our decision-making. Be sure you always ask for demographic information when you are asked to approve representation on committees and when you review information about the staff that you hire and train. Finally, while engaging all of our diverse families and communities is second nature to some of our schools, many of our schools are not as familiar with what works. It takes time, training, support, and attention to change the way we've always done things. Be sure you make decisions as a board that provide that time, the training, the support, and the attention. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes. First, thank you very much. And I guess if you stick around long enough, I start hearing things. I am on two occasions trying to get a board goal of community engagement and things as a board goal, and it was unsuccessful in that one. I'm glad you're bringing it to our attention. You addressed in your comments your problems with DPO meetings and things like that, and you also mentioned about times when we meet. Do you have any suggestions that way? I've heard people talk that, you know, DPO in the middle of the day, in the middle of the week, is really difficult for everybody who works to attend. And do you have any thoughts as far as to help parents?
Well, I believe always after working hours. And this is how it happens. Usually, at Horn, it's at 6 o'clock. The only thing is that, to be honest with you guys, the things that they are discussing are not so much of interest to us. We need to bring a lot of issues that speak to us so that we can be able to be representative and to come and talk at the PTOs.
And what are those issues that are...
One of the things that is, for example, the culture differences. I can give you an example. I used to work for Kirkwood Community College, and in our culture, we talk very loudly. We talk at the same time. You can see five people talking at the same time, responding to each other, and understand each other's. While in your culture, guys, this is not acceptable. So I've seen some cases where students were punished because they kind of interrupted some other person who is talking. So we can resolve this by, example, introducing administrators to the school, for example. So when it happens, in my case, when it happened, I had one of my colleagues come to rescue me from the fight in her thoughts that I was having with my students in front of me. I was like, hey, this is not a fight we're discussing. It is just, this is it. This is our culture. And from that time, they did understand that when I talk in a loud voice, they do not need to come and rescue me. It is us. This is how we talk. And I can have a family of four people standing in front of me, and we all talk at the same time. So that is not the case with you, and that happens at the school as well. So if I am a teacher from a different culture, and there is a student from a different culture and is interrupting me, this is going to be disrespectful. Yes, we are going to learn. For fact, we are going to learn eventually. But until that comes, just to avoid the culture conflict, we need paraeducators. We need administrators to be within the school administration just to explain these odds, these things that are happening that are new to you, that you do not understand, and vice versa. Like, at the same time, it could be, hey, listen, you cannot interrupt somebody who's talking. This is not acceptable in this culture. So these are the kind of things that we can talk about. The culture differences. Well, introducing staff to the schools, this is one of the most important things as well.
And you were talking about Horn and their translation. Is Horn translating more documents than other schools? Is that the case?
I wouldn't know. I mean, we've translated recently all of our enrollment forms, report cards at the elementary level, parent communication around reading and math.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I think when we were talking about the topic, it's not only like the official school things, but activities that are going on. Like, for example, I'll give a quick example. Halloween parade just happened at my kid's school. I never saw the information come out in any other language other than English. So kids whose parents speak Spanish, or French, or any other language, in my opinion, in my... This is not, I'm not saying it is the way it happens, but when the few kids I see that are not dressed up for Halloween, a lot of them are kids that I know speak Spanish. So maybe the message never got home, or they didn't know that the activity was going to happen.
So but Horn translates all that stuff?
Most of the time, yes, they do. And they even distribute brochures. They do not depend only on electronic things. Because again, for our culture, at least I'm talking about my culture, most of my people do not even have emails. They do not check that. Even if they do have it, they do not check that very often. And they knew, because we have a big diversity students at Horn. So they know that. Because of this, they started printing brochures in different languages, or even in English.
So how do they do that? So if I'm a principal, how do I translate my brochure into Swahili?
What they did is, as I said, they recruited some people from the communities, from different communities.
Okay, so volunteers?
Yes. They are volunteers. Like, for example, one volunteer can recruit other volunteers from the community. And this is exactly what happened at Horn. So we have that guy, I don't recall his name, who did that for the International Night. And he just kind of created that group. And when it comes to that point, he talks to people, hey, if you think you're confident enough to do the translation to Arabic or from Arabic, that would be good. And this is how it did work.
So then, I guess my question is, how do we scale that? Right? So how do you make sure? Because not every building may have that person willing to do that or able. So how do we, you know, that's what I'd like to think. Like, how do we scale up? Like, we can do the district stuff, the website. So how do we scale up the menus and the Halloween message so that every school, even schools that may only have maybe one or two families?
Let me tell you how you can do that. Recruiting. With your own eyes as an administrator at the school, you can notice that this parent speaks good English. He's active. He does have some time to give it to us. So when you talk to that parent, and you bring them to the school and try to include them, this parent is going to bring other parents. And this is how it goes. Like, we need to recruit. This is why I'm insisting on recruiting. It is not only letting it do for us or for them, the parents, to come. No. The administration needs to reach out and needs to target specific people who are, I would say, interested, or sometimes not interested, but they just want some encouragement to come.
I think there also has to be a centralized portion of it. Like, the schools need to know that the expectation is that if something's going home, they need to try to get it out. And have the resources for the schools to be able to do it. Because there's this hunchbudge of, this school does it, this school didn't. Like, I knew a teacher at, what was it, Lucas, many years ago. And she reached out to me because she knew I knew Spanish. I had no kid at Lucas. And for a while, I translated their newsletter. I don't know if it's being done now, because I no longer do it. So it could be that they found someone else. It could be that they don't do it anymore. So I think there needs to be someone who's constantly reminding schools, hey, this is the expectation. This can really help your community engagement at your school.
Right. And the comment you made about it being the norm and not the exception is very important. And we've got to, we have got to make, like Raphael from Work for Justice, who reminded us when we had our public meetings to have interpreters on staff, we shouldn't have to get reminded by the public. That should be a policy that whenever we have a public meeting, we don't wait until the community comes to us and requests that. We need to have the policy that we do that. And...
Because as Sariah says, it's just another invitation. It's another way of letting the community know, hey, you're welcome.
Right.
There will be people here for you.
And right. And I mean, and if we have to invite people to our meetings, that's very easily done. And that's something we can do, and we can do it at a district level and go out that way. And I thought you were right on that it needs to start at the top and as far as doing that. And I want to thank you for having the courage to come and speak before us tonight and that. And I find a lot of similarities in my family. We speak very loud. We speak over each other as well. We probably shouldn't, but we do.
You speak at the same time?
We speak at the same time, and usually, the loudest voice wins, unfortunately. At least the household I came from. But no, this is very important. And you're absolutely right. Parents are their children's first teachers. And we, in all the things that we're doing, we have to never lose track of the fact that we've got to bring the parents along on everything and have them included.
I have a question about WhatsApp. You said that WhatsApp was a tool that you use to help with the International Night. And I know that's a very common communication tool. You mentioned email's not a great forum. Paper brochures might be better. But is WhatsApp an opportunity for us to get the word out in a different way to different families?
Well, if you can create... I think that is going to be a little bit difficult. Can we create a group like Iowa City School District in the WhatsApp? That is, I don't think so.
Can you do it at the school level? I just don't, I don't know. I mean, WhatsApp is very common.
It is very common. We use it very often. Like, each time you see me on the phone, I'm on WhatsApp. So because I communicate with people like that, and even people in my home country, I communicate with them with WhatsApp.
Did you create your own WhatsApp group, or did the school create the WhatsApp?
No. The guy who the school recruited, Unlobbit, he did create it that. It wasn't me. It was...
I wonder, I mean, PTOs create a WhatsApp group for their school and use that as a means of inviting people in or getting agendas distributed, or ideas for what should be discussed in a meeting? I don't know. I'll just throw that out.
Or maybe one of the room mothers, or like, so that every class could have a WhatsApp group, and it could go out, invitations or something.
The only problem there is going to be language, if we did that. So I am not sure if WhatsApp communication between the school and the parents is going to be effective. But it can be effective from within the parents who speak the same language.
Okay.
And WhatsApp, you lose, there's no moderator. Everybody can just... So it could get out of control really quickly, in my opinion.
It can be very noisy.
But you're communicating in your language when you're communicating with other classes?
Of course, yeah. I would say the majority of parents do not speak micro English. They're learning. It's going to take some time. But again, when they do learn, newcomers will come. And again, the same problem is going to exist. So...
Any other questions?
I don't know if I have any other questions. I mean, because we have this at Kirkwood too. I mean, PTO involvement, and it's not, you know, some of it's language. It's not just language, though. There's lots of barriers. But you tend to see the same types of people involved in PTOs, and there's not usually a lot of diversity. And we've had folks come to Kirkwood, and they come once because they do not see a point. They don't speak the language.
They don't speak the language, they have no clue what's going on. And that's even, you know, I'm at a PTO, and we're rattling off, talking about stuff, and it's really clear, they're just like, none of this makes any sense to me. I mean, I've met lots of people who don't even know what their kid's school's name is. And they don't care necessarily, they just know, hey, they go to school. That's, and they don't know, so, so I guess what, what I think we, what I want to know, I mean, we don't know the things we don't know.
Yep.
You know, like, we don't know that people don't come if they're not invited.
That's why I'm here.
Well, yes, but again, and here at the board, but how do we get this to, frankly, it's probably principals. We've done CSIPS.
Yes.
And we say, you know, you need, we need to get more active with our PTOs to reach out to communities, because when I, you know, the attendance area development stuff, by far, the most engaged meeting I went to was the Sudanese community. By 10 times the amount of anybody else who showed up. And they, we stayed long, they had questions about really the deep, meaningful stuff we've been talking about, not like, frankly, I almost, I don't know if we heard one time that night, don't mess up my kid's experience. Like, nobody said that. That wasn't even in the conversation. And that's frequently what the feedback we get when people come to our meetings, is, don't mess up my kid's experience. At the Sudanese, it was all these sort of big overarching questions of culture, and, and that's the kind of engagement we need from our community. I mean, I, you know, our typical white, middle-class isn't used to that. It's oftentimes very self-centered, very my family, how does this affect me? And that's the opposite of, I think, what we're doing as public educators. I mean, our whole goal is, you know, to make it better for folks, I think, you know, who don't have it good, and educate everybody at the same level. So the more we can get that kind of energy in our PTOs, that's going to help drive some of those PTOs that, that may just, my guess is, every single PTO in our district needs new blood, new engagement. I mean, that's the story of PTOs. It's always the same people all the time, and they burn out. And they get done, you know, just running all of the international nights, and all of the, whatever it is. So, you know, I think we have this untapped, huge untapped potential.
I think...
When I say, when I said...
And that's what our cultures do.
Okay. When I said it needs hard work, I meant it. For example, when I joined the Equity Committee right now, I tried to recruit a lot of people whom I know, they are going to be very active, and they can have a lot of input in here. But it is hard. And I'm not giving up. I'm going to continue asking them to join, I'm going to tell them the stories, what's happening, and this is how you can make a change, and this is how it's going to be beneficial for your child. It's not going to happen today or tomorrow, but eventually it's going to happen. It only needs people to come. If the first person came, then I'm assuming that a lot of people can, can join.
I think a main thing is, buildings need to be aware of what their population looks like. And that just because a certain population doesn't show up, it doesn't mean they don't care.
No.
You really need to figure out why they're not showing up, and it's as simple as asking. It's as simple as, was that a bad time? Like, my experience, for example, at West, walking around the hallways on parent night, or back-to-school night, where you go from classroom to classroom, a lot of minorities were not there. Maybe they don't know what it's about, maybe they don't do it in their countries. I know they didn't do it at my school. So reach out, explain what the activity is, explain the importance, try to do it around times that work better. I know it's hard, it's a huge school, but just be aware of your population and try to figure out, is there something we can do to make it more accessible? It seems like a simple question. It's not, it's not at all.
I have a question for Steve. So do we have any expectation from the state, or anywhere else, that is built into our CSIPS already, for each building? That there be a certain level of community engagement?
No, but I would say through a school improvement planning process, especially with our ESSA designations, or formerly SINA designations, there's definitely a parent involvement component to that. Also with our, just Title I in general, there's always a family engagement component as part of that.
So it's already there?
For Title I buildings.
Yeah.
As well as anyone that would have received designations in the past around SINA, or...
Okay. So it's not necessarily in every building with CSIP?
Right.
Does every building now have a CSIP?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's maybe something we could ask for, is we have to include that.
Well, and language, I think is probably the first, I mean, the culture piece, you're only going to figure out when you encounter it.
Yes.
And you're like, oh, here's this clash. But the language piece, like, you got to know. I mean, if you don't speak English, like, I've been, like, how do we do the school menu? You know, that seems like, like, the number one conversation in my house before we leave is, what's for lunch today?
Yeah.
And are we doing home lunch or school lunch? And so, you know, that's something we could, I assume, fairly easily generate in our top five languages or whatever.
I think we already do that.
Okay.
But again, that's an electronic platform. Because we've got the ability to use the translators that are built into the software to generate a pretty quick turnaround on the translation. Our big problem comes in the on-demand work with translators, because you can find a two-week backlog of documents that are waiting to be translated. And there are times when I know that there are things in the queue that don't get translated in time for the event, because they're trying to catch up and stay up with those events that are most, that are going to happen next sequentially on the calendar, and we just simply don't have enough translators, don't have enough capacity to do it right now.
Well, it seems like at some schools, they're able to meet that demand.
They are trying to, as I said, by kind of lobbying some people and recruiting them. This is what I'm saying.
Well, so that might be a, I mean, that could help anyway, right? I mean, if we can get the word out to building principals to, and, and I know a lot of this is way more, we need to be put, getting, you know, trying to grab people and not waiting for them to show up. And so, so getting that word out, like, who are the parents in your building to, you know, because I, I think this is, I think this is a huge potential, a huge opportunity, and to solve that problem too. Like, who are the folks?
Will they be willing to do some translations?
Will they be willing to do some translations? And, you know, and the DPO, I think it would be a good place to start as well, so PTOs can be aware, like, hey, you want more people in your PTO, here's untapped resources. And here are some of the reasons, because I guarantee you, most of those PTO people don't get, I know myself, I don't know what not to, what cultural, you know, I know mine. The first thing I went to a Sudanese event on time, I was actually two hours early. I had no idea about that. Sudanese time.
Oh, yeah, that is part of the culture too.
So that was a, that was a learning thing for me. And I know there's, you know, I've heard other examples, so, but once we get people in, we can start having those conversations. And I think, I really do think it's, it's some, some small misunderstandings, but that become amplified when you never address it. You know, like, the whole, we talk over each other, and that just takes, okay, but not in a classroom setting.
Yep.
Or here's, you know, I mean, and, you know, we don't want to, you know, get you in trouble. Or, yeah, we have to be on time for things, because we, everybody's on a tight schedule, and everybody, you know, we, and that is our culture, that we're on time for things. So, but we have to find places to have those conversations. I, you know, I don't know, within individual PTOs, that's probably a hard thing, right, for a PTO meeting, but can that happen at a higher level, so that, maybe there's a mechanism for a PTO or a principal to say, oh, what did you do at Horn? And can Principal X go to the Horn and say, you know...
They've actually, I want to say, last year was the first year that the DPO actually had a best practices forum, where the idea was to bring in those things that were working in your PTOs and share them with the rest of the PTOs. So I think last year was the first year that they did that.
Do they have engagement at Horn, PTO? PTO engagement?
Not a lot, I don't think so. I went to only one of those.
Yeah.
And I didn't get back again.
Because I, because that, because that, I think that's a really important piece, because the PTOs are so important for school culture.
Yes.
And for engagement. I mean, it's a, it's a really important partnership, so that may be a place to start, because the kind of thing, like, we need translators, sometimes that comes from the PTO. And if there were more folks of different cultures at the PTO meetings, they're going to say, because the truth is, who sets those agendas? The people at the meeting.
Yeah.
So all you have to do to set an agenda is show up and say, let's talk about this. But you have to know that. And you have to know, hey, you have to be assertive here. And truthfully, what's going to happen is, you'll find many of your people are going to be PTO presidents, because they're going to say, oh, who wants to be president? And everybody's going to put, say, not me. And it's going to be those people who are engaged. And then you can really, I think, I think that's an important piece to this, is for people to understand what a central role PTOs play in schools, and how much change you can actually affect on a PTO.
The thing is, for, for parents like me, as I said, sometimes we need to feel welcomed and invited, not only once, twice, thrice, and even sometimes five times, just for me to be encouraged to come and participate. And to be honest with you guys, the PTO in our country is, I think it does not exist at all. We don't have it.
Yeah.
So this is, even PTO is a new culture to us. We need to learn it. We need to know what is PTO, what do they do? For us to be able to do that, it's only, I think, at the level of the school itself, even the teachers and the administrators, these are the guys who can attract parents to contribute and to come and to be beneficial, both for both sides.
Because I, because I know, that's like at Kirkwood, every time we have an event, I'm like, ah, we should be out here, the PTO should be out here recruiting. And we don't. And just because everybody's busy, and we all have, you know, and so, where could we sort of have a forum, or a talks, to sort of communicate, like, the best practices for PTOs? How do we, you know, including this, this piece? Because I think, you know, we're going to solve a couple of problems. One, people feel more welcome, and two, we're going to get more energy and engagement in our schools, and that's a win for everybody. So how could we, I mean, is the DPO the best place for that? Do we have a meeting of certain community leader? I don't know.
Well, I think always targeting the community leaders is a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
That is good. I can give you an example. If you remember, the girls who came and talked about the vacations of Eid al-Adha, and I think you saw how many people filled the room. And that happened through the community leaders at the mosque. People talked to each other, and people were like, hey, you have to come, this is so important to our community. And voila, everybody came. So I think targeting community people who are at the tower, who can communicate, or who have way in the community, that's a good idea.
So maybe, so then maybe like, and I don't know who are, like, I could see a DPO hosting an informative night, invite, specifically targeting, you know, our, you know, just go back to the communities we've gone through on AAD. I mean, we, we've already made contact with a lot of communities this way. So Center for Work Justice, Black Voices Project, Sudanese American folks, whomever else. And then, and then have a pretty big, you know, presentation. And I would invite, like, I know, there's a super active PTO parent at Kirkwood who is not from the United States, right? So finding those people who could come and speak, you know, this is why, and I know he's tried to, like, when people show up, he's like, no, you got to come, come back again. And it, I think it does take that repetition, but I think we have to know that, our DPOs and our PTOs need to know that. And so that sounds like a real opportunity, to get a whole bunch of people in the room together. And one, it's a big invitation, and just explaining the cultural differences and what it is.
And I know DPO, they control their own agenda, but we actually, from a push-in standpoint, have suggested to them a topic which focuses on the diversity of the community, and the work that we're doing, and the outreach. They were very receptive, they're very interested in it. They're trying to figure out how to spot it into their calendar, or the other things that they've already requested. And I don't know if they got back to us yet, but we're hoping, I think it was December or January, that they're going to try to get that group in, so that we can come in and say, here's a better understanding of the district as a whole, in terms of our population, here are the things that are going on right now, the things that maybe you might not be aware of, because that's not part of your experience as a parent in the district. And so hopefully broadening their understanding of the work that we're doing, which could then lead to, okay, what do we need to do next?
Yep. I like that.
Sharing this presentation with Eric, Eric Johnson's presenting thing?
Yep.
I mean, the DPO of the district, do they see this? And maybe some of us could follow up with them, and kind of provide the context of this discussion, to help them see what DPO could have.
He's really enthusiastic about it.
Yeah.
So he knows that he needs to find room in the agenda. Of course, as he reminded me, he's one voice on the committee that picks who needs to talk.
It's just an hour-long meeting. I mean, if we're trying to bring in different leaders, or however the agenda will be set for that session, it's an hour, it doesn't feel...
I mean, maybe an hour's not long enough to have that conversation, but I think what's going to happen with any amount of time, what I hope is, you, people understand, oh, hey, like, learn that part of the culture, like, somebody does need to go, and to show up, and, and then, you know, start small, and you start getting few people involved, and then that's going to go wide and get more people involved. But the more people who know, because like, some of the things you've said, and frankly, throughout this whole process, I've learned tons of stuff from people prior to that, totally.
Yeah.
And I would have had no way of ever find out, it's not like you can go to the website. Even at UIHC, we have Culture Vision, it's a pretty nice app that, you know, tells you, but it's super limited. I mean, it's not, but it's enough, oh, you know, this culture maybe doesn't want touched on the back, or something like that. But it's not, it's not robust, but it's something. But still, it's that person-to-person communication where I think we learn a lot.
Well, and Henry Harper has always been advocating to me, similar to what you're talking about, you, you get five new families per school. That's your goal. Five. Twenty schools, that's 100 new participants. And to the point of the invitation, the driving, the bringing, you go the extra mile. You make it happen.
Yeah.
And once you get five in, those five, if they can bring one, the multiplier.
Right.
So that's, that's, that's where we've got to go. And in my view, as young, with parents coming in, because when you're a young parent, you want nothing but the best for your child. And you're looking for every, every possible advantage or benefit for that child. And for people that don't know what, how the, how the system works and things like that, to go and, and start fresh, and, and help mold that, and, and get them as an active participant, you're going to have that, you know, if, if you start with families in first grade, you're going to have that for 12 years going down the road. And they're also going to be helped to be advocates for you with other new families. So, yeah, the more we put into this, I think the benefits we're going to get back are going to be tenfold.
Keep in mind, communities change, leaders change. So it has to be somewhere where we can remember to do it on a yearly basis. I hate to sound like a broken record, but like, Comprehensive Equity Plan, CSIPS, these are all good places where we can come back and remind ourselves that we need to keep doing it constantly, not just one year.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. Really appreciate you coming and sharing your insights on this important topic to us. Generated a really great conversation, and some action items going on the floor, which is fantastic. So try to keep this energy moving, and start with DPO, and see where we can go.
And CSIPS.
And CSIPS.
All right, I think.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Moving into the attendance area topic, voluntary transfers at first, or is there anything you want to discuss on that topic?
Well, I just wanted to get our social official document.
Oh, that was corrected, the draft document too. There was, it was still a draft on the previous.
Yeah. Talking about numbers.
Yeah.
That's one. That's, that's.
That's the final 101.
Well, and on that, on that note, with voluntary transfer, I think that changes some of the dynamics of some earlier decisions. And especially the, let me make sure I get my notes here right. The grant and attendance areas. I think there's some, with voluntary transfer, we should relook at the grant pen boundary, especially option one.
Do you mind if I interrupt something to what you're saying?
Sure.
So there's, I thought, as I think about the boundaries, that there's multiple changes that will come up over time. You're talking about some now specific. What is the process? What's going to be the process going forward for, I mean, I know the idea was that these were going to all age out and there wouldn't be any, but I think that's probably not realistic. I think there probably will be, so I, I think maybe there should be a plan for how this will be revisited each time there's a reason to revisit it. Like right now, we're talking about some maps that will change some things for foreign students, for some other places for, and, you know, are we going to revisit this after we take our boundary vote?
I, I think that's what we talked about on a previous work session, was that every time we decided on a boundary change, we would need to go back and look at the voluntary transfer policy and make sure that we didn't need to put in some kind of exception for, you know, a particular neighborhood or whatever. I mean, I don't know if that was in the minutes, not, but I sort of remember having that conversation, that it needs to be a part of that boundary change process, is to go back and look at voluntary transfer and make sure not to lose the change of that policy.
And so I think maybe just normalize that somehow, because I could see it getting, you know, like three years from now or something, I could see that getting different people at the table, it gets sort of lost. So I don't know if we want to write that in somewhere.
Yeah, how would we want to do that?
No, and I guess like the one thing I would offer that I think is, might be a little bit unique about this Scanlon Farm section is that at the time that the attendance area was determined, part of the conversation with community members that were present at those meetings was that there would be some consideration for grandfathering, but then that wasn't, that decision wasn't made as part of the boundary decision. So my recommendation would be, as you move forward, that you actually do those contemporaneously. Because had the board at that time said, you will go to school in your attendance area, which is actually our expectation as an administrative team, because that, that allows us to plan better, and I can share an anomaly that we had, you know, as we look at this particular policy decision in terms of how it affects staffing, that's a real challenge for us. So our expectation is, and to be honest with you, has always been, when you open a new school, that's where you go to school. So you open the new Hoover Elementary School, you go to school in Hoover Elementary. You open Borlaug, you go to school in Borlaug. The only reason that we saw this one perhaps as an exception to that was that when the, when the school was originally, the attendance areas were determined, that building location changed as part of that process. And so then there were concerns raised, I think legitimate concerns raised by the parents, what if you eventually build that school, and it happens within this very narrow window, and what does that mean to repetitive moves for my kids? So I think that there may very well be few exceptions that look like that in the future. I think you're more likely to see things that look like New Hoover, that look like Borlaug, that look like Garner when they opened. And those create fewer needs for exceptions, and that was part of our process as we went through and drafted this, that in the future, when you selected a new school location and you determine an attendance area for it, like previous schools, I think that we think that your expectation is that K through five kids that live in that attendance area are going to go to school there the first year, and that fifth to sixth grade capstone students would have an exception, but that there would be very few other grandfathering exceptions that we will be recommending to you. We really saw this one as anomalous to that process.
I think what Phil's getting at, though, is that in the boundary changes that we're discussing right now, tell me, Phil, if I'm speaking out of line, and what we're discussing right now, there would be some changes that we might already want to incorporate in this, so.
And again, so I'll use the, this one is a perfect example for you. When you create grandfathering situations like that, it makes staffing very difficult. So right now, there are almost 80 kids that fit in the Lincoln Attendance Zone piece in particular. So if all 80 of those kids go to Penn, or all 80 of those kids go to Lincoln, that creates very different staffing dynamics in both of those buildings. They don't have to tell us until March 1st. We do staffing in January. So that's a really difficult position for us. To have to deal with it one year, because we presume that most of the people who elect to go one direction or the other will then stay there for the remainder of their, their years, because they're not going to want to disrupt their students. So we know that that's a one-time hurdle for us. We don't anticipate having to deal with significant changes in that Lincoln population each year over the next four years until those kids age out. We anticipate that we'll probably have a pretty good idea where they're going, although they do have to fill out a form every year. We don't think we'll see a lot of movement in it. So I would actually encourage you not to create a lot of grandfathering options for students.
I think, I think just believe, just take it a step, we're making a boundary change or opening a new school that causes boundary changes, we sort of go to the transfer policy and say, yep, no exceptions, good, listen, or whatever. I mean, just a step in our work to make sure it gets done.
Just make sure it's not forgotten.
Just make sure it's not forgotten. I mean, and I think, I think to your point, rarely we want to put in this kind of exceptions for all the reasons that you just noted, but I think just having the conversation, taking the due diligence step is.
It's like a checklist thing.
Well, pairing, pairing voluntary transfer with attendance area changes so that they're discussed contemporaneously.
As long as they're discussed and it's talked about.
And to codify that as a process step, I don't know that it needs to be in this step.
No.
And isn't that superintendent direction or something?
But in our, in our attendance area process, I think that would be.
Yeah, I think that's where we.
All right, fantastic.
Well, and my question on the voluntary transfer is that, you know, that has, that's changed things, and I don't know that the changes that we've produced, any data that would be, that, that we could look at to see the grant pen option using option one in our original boundaries discussion. That was, that's where I'm getting at. If we could, if we could get data to see with the elimination of voluntary transfer with the grant ten using option one, with Penn Street as the divider.
So you're asking new building blocks.
Well, if.
Right?
Essentially. Right. So I think that when the decision was made to rather than draw the line straight across, to come up and include those students in Penn and down and include these students in Grant, we used the live-in data. So the live-in data would factor in no voluntary transfer. And I think you see those numbers in the PowerPoint when we go through that after this. You'll see those numbers in there, because those are all live-in students.
As I recall, those two blocks were roughly equal in numbers of students.
But different in their socioeconomic.
Not a lot different.
Not a lot different.
Like it was, it was a trade-off, because we took the one, because when we had the straight line, the first thing we did was grab that Molly and Chad, whatever those other streets are, and put it down in Penn, and left the other one alone, and then it significantly shifted.
Right.
So we did a trade-off, and I think they were fairly equal. And that was really based on, most of the people that were living there saying they wanted that to happen.
They were talking about walkability.
Yeah, that was the issue, was having to cross the roundabout, and which way you crossed it, and how that worked, that was a big part of that conversation up there at Liberty High School, we went through that. So, you know, Phil, to your point, as you, as we go through these numbers, if there are other building blocks that you want us to look at, we can always pull those numbers out. But I think the ones that we're looking at are the live-in numbers, so they should show you reflective of no voluntary transfer, what those numbers look like.
I mean, that's very clearly stated in your charts here.
And if you flip down, and I know we're not on that PowerPoint yet, but I can segue to that when you're ready, but when you flip down to the page now, you actually see that, we put all the demographic data on there, I pulled it out and stuck it in there, so that you can see what they look like with the live-in students.
Yeah, it's so simple. Are we done with the voluntary transfer thing? Do we want to make sure it's part of the attendance area board, that it's going to be a checklist of voluntary transfer?
I would just say maybe bring back the, whatever the process is, if we have it in policy somewhere, could we just like?
Do we put process in policy, do we put it in superintendent directions?
You really don't have, there isn't a, there isn't a formulaic process for doing attendance areas. So if you think about like Appendix 5 as a, or, you know, naming a school, you don't have as a board, there isn't a specific process for follow these 16 steps to draw a new appendix or a new attendance area. We don't have something formulaic like that. So I don't, I mean, it would live in our internal processes, absent writing some kind of new policy that spells out how to draw an attendance area.
Would we like to just like a statement that's on this policy that says this policy will be reviewed as boundary updates are made or whatever? Like a statement just written on there that's a sentence that says when it will or will not potentially get.
I'm just thinking years in advance as boundaries change, you know, they may forget that this was the plan, this was the intention.
Wait, that gets to the bottom, so it's not change, right?
Well, I think.
It says that.
Because we've got, I was going to say, one of the things that says is all voluntary school transfers are subject to cancellation upon, but we could easily modify a statement in there that says essentially that type of thing, that the voluntary transfer process will be reviewed every time there is a change in attendance areas, and just simply put a statement in here to that effect.
That's fair.
And actually, I'd rather do that upfront, so we don't worry about what they are and what they aren't.
And we would, I was, would we have to vote on that amendment to this thing, since we voted on this and approved it? Or not? Is that something we could just?
No, you could just do that by affirmation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that would be great, that way, because then, you know, my guess is who's going to bring this up? Are parents affected by the transfer? And then they'll, they'll, they'll bring it up, and then we'll have to look at our things, oh, yep, it does say, or not we, but 10 years from now, some board will say, yep, we should look at this.
It's all right with you having to put it up top, rather than burying it down below, so that's one of the first things you see.
Yep.
Yeah, because I think that way, you know, to your point, Lori, then it lives somewhere visible. Because my other concern is it lives somewhere that's not visible. That's when people lose the step-by-step process.
I think that where it's important that it's, it will be reviewed.
Reviewed.
Not changed.
Right.
Yeah, we'll get.
I do see it as potentially getting more and more restrictive as opposed to less and less restrictive.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah, hopefully, as with this stuff.
Of the rant, of the good boss things. So I don't think you want to imply that it's going to get changed, but review it, I think it's okay.
Yeah. Seguing just slightly to the next conversation, Shaq, some of the folks I had at my table were concerned about the conversations we're yet to have with parenting and the magnets and this very issue of multiple changes. And I think this would get to their concern. We've had it written somewhere where people can see that.
Yep.
We, this is our intention of this policy, it's not just us seven people saying it now, but, you know.
Right, right. Yep. I will get that bullet, I'm actually going to, it'll be the second bullet under this first header.
Good, very good. Anything else on voluntary transfer? So that's about the attendance area topic. Yeah.
I'll just share a little bit, I went through this with the elementary principals today, so that they got a preview of it, knowing that it was out on board docs and likely to generate questions from their folks, so we had a chance to walk through it today. So the first two data slides here, so slides two and three in your packet, show two different sets of information. The information on the left side is the same on both. These are our current attendance areas with our current students, so that will include students that are on voluntary transfer. And then of those students, shows you the percentage of students that are low SES, I was able to gather the information, Adam was real helpful with that, so we've got the ELL information, the special ed information, then that's this year's capacity numbers and this year's capacity percentage. On slide two, this is what the board has approved, because I know there's some questions that came up as we were having those conversations about the, what if nothing happens? You know, what will it look like next fall if no action is taken? So this gives you a snapshot of what it would look like next year if nothing happens, if you take no action whatsoever on changing any of the attendance areas. But because of the new voluntary transfer process, these are now all live-in numbers. So with the board-approved attendance areas, here are your live-in numbers, and then your corresponding low SES, ELL, and special ed numbers. I put the capacity numbers in there for 21, 22, because again, this is what we're growing into. So we know a couple of years out, if, if as a board, you don't change anything, right? None of the things that we've talked about, you just leave all as-is, they're going to grow into this in a couple of years. So that's what that's going to look like. So that gives you an idea of where we'll be if we do nothing other than say, we're going to move forward with the attendance areas as they were voted on, we're not going to make any changes. So it gives you an idea what that looks like. These numbers right here are reflective of the changes that you have suggested to date.
Sorry, these numbers right here?
I'm on slide three now.
Next slide, thank you.
Yep, next, I'm on slide three. So again, where we are today. Now, this is all of the changes that you've requested.
Including the newest ones?
Including the, the, the most recent ones. So for instance, like moving the small neighborhood in Kirkwood up to Wickham, those numbers are included in here. Wherever we've tinkered around the edges.
See, this is really, this chart is different from the October 23rd, based on those handful of modifications that were suggested in the last one.
Right. So this, and now it has all that demographic data that we were looking for, so our ELL and our special ed data is included on that. Again, where we're going into with our numbers. But now, if you were to adopt all of the rest of the maps that are in this packet, this is what it would look like. And I know that there were some questions last time, hey, I don't see my, my school in there. So you now have all the elementary schools in there, even though there might not be any changes to them, recognizing that there are people out in the general public that are going out and looking at this and saying, oh my God, where's my school? Because I had a couple of people ask me that, I don't see my school in the packet. I added them all in there, just so that you can see what they look like, even if there aren't any specific changes. And what I did then, if I drop down just a couple of slides here, is you see, again, the today numbers and the tomorrow numbers for each school side by side, so you can take a look at those. Even in schools where there aren't any changes, you'll still be able to see that. Because sometimes I thought this might be a little easier to see than trying to look at it on that, that big chart.
So Steve, you said that first, on the first two slides?
Yep.
So those current numbers, though, don't match the current numbers on the voluntary transfer form.
The current numbers on the voluntary transfer form, so one of the things that we're doing right now is we are kind of working with the live data, so you can see it. So there may be some slight changes to that. And we were also in the process of certifying enrollment in that voluntary one, and we hadn't resolved all the changes in there yet.
Okay.
So these give you the live.
So are these more accurate than the voluntary transfer?
And the appendix A is going to have to change, it says we're going to certify.
Correct.
And whatever.
And what happens here.
So three, chart three has the most current.
Yes.
Numbers.
Yes.
Okay.
So you'll see that moving forward, we always try to keep whatever charts we're giving you, always dating them in the corner.
Okay.
You'll know that that's our most recent information. That was a question actually that came up with the elementary principals today, because they're like, wait a minute, I think I have 412, or I have 419, so, yeah.
I think one third slide that could be added would be helpful is, it could be pretty easy, is to take the 2019, new attendance areas, no voluntary transfers, just the right one.
Yep.
And the right one of this one.
The two right ones?
Side by side.
Oh, sure.
Side by side.
Yep.
Because I was actually doing that on my computer today and it had two screens.
Oh, sorry about that.
You know, just to compare school boys and differences.
Because, yeah, because going forward, we know that that top right one, the first one, is going to be what happens regardless.
Yep.
That's exactly what I did this afternoon.
Super simple. I can have that done, have that out there tomorrow. Yep. So those are the numbers, so I just want to start with that. Tried to set them up, and by the way, just so you know, and I know this was a conversation, we had this, either I don't know when we started, this may be like a year ago, about trying to make sure that we weren't doing like red to green kind of thing. So what I'm trying to do now is consistently use color coding, so your, the gradient level is darkest to lightest, highest to lowest. So you can find the school that's got the greatest capacity is going to be your darkest red color, the school with the highest ELL population is going to be your darkest blue color, so as you go through there. Now, interestingly enough, when I was going through and looking at this, you see some gradation in our special ed numbers here. It looks a lot more uniform in color here, and that's simply because there's better distribution. So whenever there's a better distribution, you're going to see less extremes on the color gradient. And that's actually what you'll want to see. So that wasn't necessarily an intentional part of our conversation over the course of this entire discussion. But I just thought that was an interesting outcome to take a look at. Is you see much more differential here and much less here. So that's a great unintended consequence, but that's what we're looking for. So I just wanted to point that out because I think that makes it a little bit easier to see. Oops. In here, just a reference reminder, I know the elementary principals can't have too many data points on there because they sit on top of each other. So this number is the orange column. So that's again, the attendance areas with all of the changes that are in all those maps below. So that'll show you your low SES numbers. So a couple of things to point out there. We got two of the seventies, three in the sixties, we now have six in the forties, and we've got three in the thirties and three in the twenties. So we're starting to see in here more and less. I will point out one thing that's a little bit of a challenge. When you look at the change, the schools that wind up losing the fewest or gaining the most, students that are low socioeconomic status, these numbers are a little bit bigger than the last one that you looked at. The, the number of low SES students added at Lincoln and Longfellow as a percentage is a little bit higher. Absolute numbers, not a huge difference, but the percentage is higher. So I just want you to recognize that. But the other nice thing is where the line looked a little more like this, it's more of a bathtub now, which means that you've got less change here and less change here. So the outliers are smaller in number. Had a really good conversation today. Ann Langenfeld has talked about the amount of time that her team has spent preparing for that. They're obviously the outlier on this edge. She feels really confident about it. So when I rolled out the new map that has a bigger, broader Lincoln attendance area, no problems with it at all. So just share that with you.
Yeah, I think her staff is really excited about it too.
They are. And she liked the new map when I went through that. By the way, I did find an error in the map, so when we get to the Lincoln one. I don't know if you want me to go through all of these or if you just want to talk about individual ones. If you just want to talk about individual ones, if I could pop down to the Lincoln one just for a moment?
Why don't you share that?
Oops. Unfortunately, Adam and I have done this too many times. I found an error in here and I didn't find it until I was actually doing the presentation with the elementary folks today. It doesn't affect numbers now, but it will later.
You're reading my mind, Steve.
This map should have gone across here. And we have a version of that, but when he drew the final version on the software, he pulled the wrong one. Now, right now, there are no kids out here. You know, think of the enormous development out there in the Iowa River Landing that's going up, the subdivision that we know is going up here behind the firefighter memorial. So we need to redraw that. There aren't any kids, I'm sorry, there is, there's a student in there right now, one of our homeless kids. But other than that, there aren't any kids. So it's not going to affect the numbers that you see here. But I just want you to know that when we get to the final version of this, this map will actually cross here, follows up here, drops down here, follows back along the tank farm over here, and then connects down here. So that's an error, like literally described it or discovered it as I was doing the presentation this afternoon with the elementary principals.
And I spent some time with Google Maps realizing that there's no streets there, so I couldn't tell you. I was trying to tell you what.
There's a retention pond here. Yeah, there's a retention pond here. So if you're familiar with it, you're driving out Oakdale, and as you're looking on the left, there's a new finance operation that's out there, right? Okay, so that's where you're at. And we'll be going down there to the left and around this retention pond. That's where the development's going to go, and then we'll come back in here.
It's called the Hundred Acre Woods, if you wanted to know.
All right.
Oh, cute. The name of the street, Hundred Acre Woods. Because it was tied up in a lawsuit. Piglet Lane and.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there specific maps you'd like to take a look at?
You're close to Lucas, why don't you go to Lucas? And the portion in blue on the upper left-hand corner?
Yep.
The old Hoover, where, where is that one going to?
All right, so.
Go up here. That's Longfellow.
Yep. Okay. That's right here?
I'm sorry. That's Court Street.
This is Twain?
It's, no, it's, it's on the other side.
I'm sorry.
On the other side then, I think we're looking at, oops.
Are you looking about where you live, Patrick?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Elmeridge.
Go back to the.
It's man, I think.
It's, it's Lucas. Yeah, go to the Lucas one and I'll.
It's, it's Lemmy, yeah, sorry.
Here you go.
Right.
All right.
This, this portion right here.
So go to the Lemmy, I'll help you.
So you're looking at this area that's right here. Can we pop down again to Lucas?
Because Lemmy goes, so Lemmy that goes down First Avenue. And anything to the right of that ends up at Lemmy. And then to the left and south of Court Street goes to Longfellow.
So if you've noticed this right?
Okay, so, but this is going?
To Lemmy.
Yeah.
To Lemmy.
If I pop up here, you'll see the Lemmy attendance line running down here. And unfortunately, because Lemmy's got Breckenridge in it now, it winds up being small.
Yeah, that, that big line on the left. The, my only, and if you go back to the other one, I'll just bring up my.
Yep.
It just seems to me it's a cleaner, it, it's cleaner if you would just come up and include that in Lucas. Personally, because right here, you're going to have homes that are on.
Court Street.
There. And the backyard is going to another school. And it just seemed to me that you could make it a much cleaner boundary without having that little. And it isn't a lot of homes and, and gosh, I know on this street, it's a six kids, I think now. And, and up here and there, it's, it's really not that many.
And then they would have to cross Court Street.
Exactly. That way. And, and it seems like there would be, with capacity at Lucas at eighty-three point two.
So use First Ave and Court Street?
Right.
Square that up?
To, to make it a, a clean, clean corner. And I, and I, and I, you know, I guess I don't understa-, I don't know if it'd be the type of thing that make, on the other side, to at least bring it up to Court, you follow me?
Yeah, so you're looking at actually if you were to.
Just.
Works on here. Like if I was to, I can kind of see it like that, right? So take these two segments, this one out of.
Yeah.
I would be cautious in moving the other section because they're already going to Lemmy.
Well, okay, right.
But the Hoover kids have to go somewhere.
Right, right. And, and, and you're right, you know, there's no.
It doesn't look like these kids right here.
Right, exactly. Just, just square that.
Yeah, it doesn't look like that would impact them much at all. Capacity looks good.
Now, speaking of that, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know because I'd have to look at it, but I also wonder about that piece there.
Sure.
Just because they're on the east side of First Ave now.
Right, exactly.
But where you're at there is.
And, and to go.
That's why I said.
It's a Hy-Vee.
Yes, the Hy-Vee, I think you're right.
Oops. And keep in mind, the reason that that line was drawn is that's the old attendance line, so we just adopted that.
Sure. But you know, cutting, cutting across from that neighborhood over to Lucas, there's no major streets and there's bike paths and things that way.
We can definitely look at, at using the First Ave, Court Street piece.
Sure, makes sense.
Other specific ones we might want to.
If you draw that up, I would suggest letting Dennis and his team know.
Oh, yes.
Because of that conversation that we had with Hoover, them that were there when we looked at the maps originally, we were like, if you're, wherever you're at from Hoover now hasn't changed in any one map, so that was kind of.
Yeah, actually, that's a common.
Can I, can I interject too? On Thursday night, I have a, I'm scheduled to be at the Hoover PTO meeting. And so this has not been on anybody's radar. So I was prepared to talk about potentially what all of our transitions are going to be. And thinking that they're going to one of three buildings and they've known that since May of 2016. So if this is on the table, I feel like I need to be forthcoming.
And adds another building into the mix. Right?
Yeah, but potentially, how would Lucas though, wouldn't it?
Probably would.
In terms of SES?
It could. Yeah, I don't know what the demographics are there.
Actually, it could help both Lemmy and Lucas potentially. I, I think it's, Phil, is that a low SES area or is it a?
Well.
It's a mix.
It could probably be.
There's, there's a mix because there's a.
So it might be wash then.
Right, well, but I, I would think on the whole, it would lower it. Right, it, it would, it would not be, there would be some low SES, but it's, it's, it's not going to be that significant. I think, I think it would, it would lower their numbers.
At Lucas.
Well, then my question would be, my question would be, is it worth doing, disrupting the kids if it's, if it's not going to have much of a change? And, and perhaps, I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but perhaps to ask those families, crossing Court Street is an issue for them.
Yeah. Because, oh, they're coming out.
Are you saying at that PTO meeting?
I, I'm just reading it as an option as.
I think we could go through Dennis and ask them specifically because I worry that they won't be at the meeting on Thursday. We might not hear their.
Exactly. And since this doesn't, that change, if it's a wash in terms of our SES goals, and it's not really an issue in terms of capacity, then I guess I would wonder, the main issue would be crossing of Court Street.
Right, it's, it's more.
Versus their plan that they've always known that they're going there, which is more important to them.
It's more the safety and walkability thing.
Right now, the, the city has a crossing yard at Court Street. So they do have that option, so I think that might factor into what we hear from the parents. But what we can do is we can definitely draw this up. I can get this out to Dennis. For sure, we can talk about it, you can talk about it Thursday. We'll be otherwise occupied, but you can talk to the Hoover folks about that. And then if they're not present at that meeting, we can make sure that Dennis has that conversation independently with them. And Amy and I can go meet with them and get their feedback and, and see if, like you said, where are they at on that issue?
Yeah, and if that's spot on to find out, you know, are you more concerned about crossing Court or sticking with the school you've been told you're going to?
It might depend.
They land one way or the other.
That's a problem that may.
It, it might depend. It might be very similar to the conversation that we've been hearing from the Van Allen population that it's not so much the logistics of where are we going, but who are we going with? Because, you know, to your point, Phil, if it's a small number of students, you may find that they want to travel with their friends to Lemmy as opposed to moving to a new school. And that may tilt their decision on the safety factor too. So that's something we might hear from, from the parents.
And if we get different voices from the parents, we'll have parents in the call.
Yeah. So we'll get that drawn up for you. Other maps you might like to look at?
I have a, a tweak that was requested, which I think many of the board members know about, but we haven't talked about it in this aspect. The Stables, which is the area that's currently, what, it's, it's on our voluntary transfer list because it was supposed to go to Rickham if Scanlon was being built. And there's like nine students there. They're asking, can you, can we just send them to Van Allen? Like not through voluntary transfer, can we just keep their, their attendance zone Van Allen?
And for them, that was, you know, they, it's a secondary thing, you know?
It's, it's this group here. I, I moved to this map just because it's a little bit easier to see.
Okay. And then, yeah, to my.
And again, that's a matriculation, a pattern issue because they talk about traveling to a new school with a larger cohort of, from a social emotional standpoint.
We have, and they were, came to our thing last.
And this doesn't have the dots on it?
No, it doesn't.
But the one that has the dots has like one or two dots like in this area?
The Wickham one is, it shows a pretty clear.
Yeah. So yeah, two dots here. So it's just these folks that are asking. I don't know if these two dots feel the same way, but.
No, it was just that sliver.
It's just this area that's asking for it.
And then what we would do is I would just come right down the road right here. Well, that doesn't do it.
That little neighborhood.
It's just the current Van Allen line, line.
Yep.
Yeah. There's a real road track right there.
So we can do one or two things on that? We could either move the entire, so this blue section here, which is current Van Allen, move it back into Van Allen, the entire piece. We could carve out just this piece and move it back. Do you have a preference?
I'd move.
I'd leave the whole thing in Van Allen.
That's what I would do too, because then you're less disruptive.
Because you've got two kids otherwise.
Yeah, being just, those two kids are going to a new school.
They go in northwest and the others go north.
Just the numbers of it all, right, are not affecting positively or negatively.
No, absolutely not. There's, the end is too big at Wickham, too big at Van Allen. It makes literally no difference whatsoever. You won't even see a decimal point.
Let's do that.
Okay, we will do that.
Really, really appreciate it.
I know at meeting last week, the most of the talk that I got, there was a couple of different spots. Most of it was around Horn, wherever, or along, and I think a lot of emails have come out too. And it looks like the mass addressed it, but it kind of like to just walk through.
Yeah.
So one thing you.
I just want to make clear in my head, the part that moved, oh boy, I don't know when it was, from Horn to wherever.
I'm sorry, I keep thinking you can see my mouse. I didn't, you can't see my mouse. I'm throwing these over here.
The part that's right there, right? I got it. Right? So that's where we've heard a lot, but, and, and I'm okay with it. I didn't, I didn't like where Horn's numbers were, so I want to do something there. But I'm concerned that we heard only from the folks who decided to voluntary transfer their kids to stay at Horn, want to then be changed to stay at Horn. And we haven't heard from the folks who did not do that and have already moved to wherever.
Yeah.
I, I just don't know.
Right.
And it may very well be like, oh yeah, sweet, we're going back to, I don't know. That's where, I feel like this has addressed all of the people I heard from.
But there's the other side.
I'm just not sure that we heard from them all.
And, and we did have, I did have the opportunity to talk to Kristin Cannon. And I was actually at a Weber listening post with staff yesterday, a staff meeting. Neither one of them expressed a great deal of concern either way. There was a request, which of course, given our recent discussion we just had about voluntary transfer, I discouraged about, would you create some kind of opportunity for people to stay? So that, you may hear that. Yep. And again, I've asked the principals, I walked through the entire thing today, did Q and A with them, just like I'm doing with you, for the idea that they push this out to their staff and to their families so that they know what it is that we're talking about. So that they can gauge whether or not there is any significant concern, which I may know by Thursday. So to date, and Amy, you can chime in too, we didn't hear anything that, you know, set our hair on fire from either Horn or Weber about the proposed change.
I did hear from a person who had in 2016 submitted a letter from the neighborhood, so had some connections in neighborhood. And I did ask him specifically, does he have a sense of, of what? And he did talk to some people, and he did, the one thing he came back with is he said it's mixed. You know, that some people have moved, some people haven't.
Yep.
And there wasn't like a clear direction, but he did come back and say, but those that have moved to Weber, please don't move them, force them to move again within two years.
And maybe just real quickly while you think about that, so, and I don't have accounts, I can't tell you that. But if you look at it, I know one of the things that we heard from parents was their concern about the directionality of the demographic changes. So I think if you look at Horn today and Horn tomorrow, I think that's responsive to some of the concerns that we heard. And then, trying to give you motion sickness here, if you look at Weber, and you think about those numbers, so sorry, I'm going to go to zip bag. So remember at Horn, you're looking at forty-three, twenty-three, six. And you come down to Weber, forty-two, seventeen, four, right? And then the other one was Borlaug, so hold on here. So again, thirty-six, seventeen, seven. So you're seeing more parity among those three attendance areas, which I think is what I heard from parents that contacted me. And I think based on some of the feedback from some of you, that was concern that came to you from parents. So I think that you see much more parity in those three attendance areas now with these numbers. And, and maybe just so you understand, because I didn't go through that in too much detail. If you go down to Weber, oh my gosh, this is hard to see. So the neighborhood here that is behind the Come and Go, which we originally assigned to Horn, by moving these students from Weber back into Horn, that opened up seats at Horn. So that allowed us to pull these students over to Weber. So that's why you see the parity now, in particular in Weber and Horn. So if you think about them as a contiguous attendance area, there's a much more even division resulting in almost identical demographics between those two schools.
So Laura, it.
Borlaug's the one.
The person we spoke to would be against this because.
So I asked him to be, kind of like, could you check with your neighbors and ask? And he, he personally is for this change that we've got here of going back to Horn.
But he really spoke to.
But people he spoke to that said that they've already made the change at Weber, But people he spoke to that said that they've already made the change at Weber, would like the option to stay at Weber, just because it's only been, I mean, this is the second year of the change, so next year would be, you know, two changes in three years.
And there are people who decided to go along with the original boundary shift.
Exactly.
Because they stayed, they went to Weber they were assigned, rather than...
Rather than apply for voluntary transfer.
What?
Rather than apply for voluntary transfer.
Rather than apply for...
I mean, so...
Do you know how many people, do you know how many kids that are?
I don't, I can pull those numbers out for you.
I'd like to see that, because if it's some people that we, you know, not come up with a policy, but just have a, you know, an understanding. I mean, if, again, if you were doing the right thing by sticking to the boundary, you don't, you shouldn't be punished now that we changed it. You know, because that's really home run off under somebody, you know? I mean, if it's four kids, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's important to know on both sides, but, right, the ones that are in Weber now.
Right.
There may be some that are in Weber now that would love to go right back to Horn, I don't know.
Maybe there are, but I doubt they'd want...
We've heard from the folks that have voluntarily transferred into Horn, pretty vocally, but it's only been a few, right? I mean, but maybe those numbers are...
Yeah, I'll get those numbers for you.
Would you be able to know also the ones that went to Weber, what grades they're in, does that...
I will see if I can get that demographic breakdown.
Because the first graders is one time, it's different than the first grade.
Yeah, yeah. Although if they're first grader, they wouldn't have had...
Well, true, yeah.
It would really frankly only be third and fourth, well, I guess second. Yeah, anyway, and just want to know how many it is.
Yep, I can definitely get that for you.
Like I said, that change here totally answered all the questions that I got the other night at our meeting.
Well, I am the one that we had at the work team, or at the last work session.
Right, so I get it, I just don't believe it's all with this.
You know, I know...
And we only had possibly two issues that people brought up.
And then we're not on the same town.
I only have one other area that has also been addressed in the change, which is the north corridor central part that was moving and now is staying, and I would think not changing a boundary, if it still works, is a better thing than moving people.
And what Steve did instead was he took the folks that are south of Highway Six, and moved them to Lincoln, and I agree, I think it's a better move. That's an area that's someday going to be redeveloped anyway.
Yep.
Not anytime soon.
More transitionary housing right now too.
Not anytime soon, but yes, it'll be still the same transitional housing.
And I apologize, I told you about the error on the mapping we made here.
This is not a decision we're making for like, hopefully for ten, twenty years, you know, it's going to be...
Good point, yeah.
So one of the things that we did, as we tried to make sure, first of all, like I said, I got to make that change there, and I apologize, I jumped right past this. So when we moved the Forestview kids out, and then we were worried about the small size there, you talked about, okay, where are there opportunities for us? So you can see, we came down here, this is our Miller Orchard group, and again, they receive attendance support busing right now. So that makes them, just like the Boston Way group, a better choice from a targeted move standpoint, because transportation is already provided. We came out here, this is student housing, that's right across the softball fields. And again, not a large number of kids here, but as we were trying to make some room at Borlaug to better accommodate the students, gave us the opportunity to do that, and that's where, then in my conversations with Andy and Celeste, they gave us the opportunity to come up to Six, and we like using those natural geographic boundaries, and then it allowed us to capture these students that are here. And again, we've got a group of students that are homeless, that are located out at the lodge out here. And one thing that that does for us is, remember, one of our goals through this process is can we better distribute our students who receive homeless services, so they're not all targeted at individual schools, so this allows us to do some of that at the same time. So I did tell Ann, I think the term I used today, Amy was quilt, when I talked about it, most of the other schools might have two colors in their new attendance area. She's got a few more, she's got a few more, but she was very happy with it, when we went through that conversation today. She's very familiar with that, she actually did some kind of one reading instruction earlier in her career, and so she's very familiar with the area down there, thought that would be a good fit.
And that populates that school too, probably for...
It does, and remember, you know, one of the things that we really wanted to do is, we'd like to get north, like to get far north of it, but at least get north of a hundred and eighty and move into that north of two hundred, because we start to get some operational efficiencies out there. And so this actually allows us to function a little bit bigger, which is a plus, because we're going to see capacity go up at Lincoln. I don't have the current one because it's not occupied, but it's a hundred and eighty, so now we're going to make better use of the space there.
How many do you think Lincoln will comfortably hold if all of those grandfather kids stay at Lincoln?
If all of those grandfathers stay at...
Two hundred and sixty or something.
Yeah, if all those kids stay at Lincoln, we're going to be full. We're going to have more students than seats according to the capacity.
I know, and, you know, my kids went to Garner, I know what the capacity is and what actually can fit in a school is not...
Yeah, Westside went for quite a long time.
I know, I don't know what's...
Part of what we then wind up doing is looking at, and Amy and I have had quite a few discussions about this, we start looking at those programs that are not required within the school, whether it's pre-K or special ed, and say, okay, if that's one of our low incidence programs, that is housed there now, but could be housed somewhere else.
Make room by making some other...
Exactly, yeah, so we'll kind of wait and see how that shakes out before we make any decisions about this. I was talking to Christie about that today, and then talking to Ann a little bit, they really think it's going to be somewhat of a tipping point issue. You go, and you go, well, then now you're going to go. You stay, you stay, well, now you're going to stay. So they're really going to try to work, we had talked about like a commitment day kind of thing, okay, I know you don't have to turn your form in until, you know, that March first date, but can we get them to give us a commitment?
Think about it over the holidays.
Exactly, can we get an answer by the end of January from a planning purpose standpoint? Because we think if some of those social leaders in that group make that decision, it's going to be a lot easier for us to predict where the rest go. And then we'll know, Sean, if it's going to be a challenge, or if we actually have a lot of them moving up to Penn.
That's one that scares me the most, but grandfather stuff.
Yeah, well, it makes Christie nervous too, because her concern is if that's part of her future attendance area, and she goes down for a couple of years, then she's got to migrate staff to other buildings, and now when her staff numbers come back up, then she has to hire people to come back in, as opposed to retaining those teachers that are part of the team. So that was another part of our conversation today. Other specific maps you'd like to look at?
I think these look really good, yep, I was happy with the changes.
Thursday meeting, I'm going to have these tweaks that we just were describing.
Yes, I could certainly do that, these are pretty small, and so I think we can have a new map. We'll all be together, so I'm not as worried about sending out a separate map to separate groups, so I think that, given these, I can definitely do that.
There was a pair of women that were at my table, and I think it looked others, but they were concerned about Penn Meadows, so if you go to Penn.
Sure.
And it's...
So that's the group up here?
Yes, and they were interested to see if Penn Meadows could go to Grant. And, and some of the...
Did they specifically say that? Because they started at my table, and they were confused on that whole neighborhood, because they thought only their street was going to Penn, and the rest of the neighborhood was going to Grant, until I clarified for them that the whole neighborhood was going to Penn, and then they never said anything about wanting to change to me.
What neighborhood is it?
So, when we went through the process last time, the map went straight across here, and then what we did was we transitioned these two. And part of it was, you can walk through the park to get to Penn, and so there was a real concern from the folks that lived here, that they preferred to walk through the park to get there, as opposed to crossing the future roundabout, and they would actually have to cross two roundabouts, because they'd have to go across the new one here, and then the new one by the school.
Oh, yeah.
And so their request was to move here, so that was one of the things, that instead of going straight across, we moved these kids down here and these kids up there.
Did Jiffy or Lori, is that the one, you talked to those two ladies?
But I remember in January, hearing that exact concern quite a bit from that Penn Meadows area.
That they wanted, because they can walk through the park.
I can understand, they were confused when they talked to me, but I thought they talked to me first, so if they then went and talked to you after I clarified where their neighborhood was going, they didn't see that.
I can't remember exactly.
I feel like we were talking to them first, because you called me over right away, so maybe you helped clarify.
That was almost the first thing I did, was I pulled up the map on the screen, because I was like, this will be helpful.
Now, again, we had the elementary principals in today, so they were all in, so Ken and Nick and Christie were all there. When we went through the, have you heard significant concerns, questions, et cetera, from your parents? Because they're starting to have that dialogue, they didn't share any, we can definitely go back out, Phil, and ask specifically about that. But at least from the dialogue today, they didn't share that they'd gotten any direct feedback from the neighborhood, but we'll go back out and ask.
Well, and, you know, we're going to have capacity at Penn, and as far as new construction and building, we should be looking to get it in there, and just looking at the numbers with Penn, the way this year we're eighteen percent, then next year we're projected going to nineteen-three, I think long-term you're looking at that thing getting into the six, five percent range. It's going to be a single-digit school.
Yeah, I don't, I've had that discussion, and I don't see how making that change changes that.
Right, well...
Or it makes Grant a single-digit school.
That was the problem, if you remember, when we were doing that last time, that we struggled with, was that if you were to put both of those groups in either school, there's capacity for it, and then it really skews the other school, and so we're trying to put one in one and one in the other. But you're exactly right, Phil, because that's a conversation that Amy and Hayek had, is what is the construction that takes place out here? And how does that in the future then affect the demographic numbers there? And I think the bigger challenge with that is, what happens with North Liberty as it grows? And I don't see a significant addition of affordable housing out there, so I think we're going to continue to have the exact problem you're describing into the future. I think we're going to, we're going to have fewer and fewer kids that are in the low SES group that we're trying to divide among these three schools to create some level of equity, and what we're starting to see is that our low SES numbers are shifting south. So if you look at the Garner numbers, you can see that they're going up, twenty-one to twenty-nine. But when you talk to Nick about where those students are, they're not necessarily in an area that's conducive for us to shift them to either Grant or Penn from the attendance area standpoint, because they're not over here, it's not these kids. So that's a struggle we're going to have moving into the future, because I think you're exactly right, I think you're going to see those numbers moving south, not north.
Eventually you're going to be spreading across four, five, however many.
Right, which may actually put Penn back in a more appropriate category, but put a new school...
Scanlon's going to be real low, I think, because they'll take a lot of that growth.
This is where we encourage our joint entities to put affordable housing in. Speaking of that, a couple of other things to push for or advocate for is, you know, getting from Boston Way to Borlaug, there's no side, there just isn't a sidewalk. So, and I know those kids will get bused, but it's not even an option. And that, I think, the more we can kind of lean on city to say, this isn't safe.
So I thought you'd been in touch with the city manager about that.
Didn't they talk about that specific thing at the last joint entities?
And we actually have a, there's a group of activist parents right now, who are working on that very issue, because there have been a couple of accidents now out on Camp Cardinal, so they would like a light at Camp Cardinal right now, because of the difficulty for pedestrians to cross the road there, and to slow cars down. Because what happens is that's such a long uninterrupted stretch, that even though the speed limit's thirty-five, you got people traveling forty-five or fifty miles an hour, and they're more so going downhill than uphill, but... Yeah, so they would like to have a light there, because the other thing is, we're now starting to see more development across the road, and these folks here are having a hard time getting across the road. And actually, they said that you can wait for a long time, because there's no marked crosswalk, and then there's, so there's no need for people to slow down, so they really struggle with that.
Well, and when was it that Coralville gave us their pedestrian, there was a joint entities meeting where Coralville had a...
Oh, that was...
Well, I think this is...
Two summers ago, yeah.
Yeah, it was before, right.
Yeah.
But that was a very good study, and, you know, it identified some areas for some need and that, and, gosh, I remember Craig talking to us at one time saying we'd save a million dollars or something if we hadn't walked, you know, with sidewalks and buses, although we've done a lot of busing. But it's definitely something to push for and advocate on.
Yeah.
And New Hoover's another one that needs a sidewalk or something going there, because we're getting...
Plus it's going to need some from going up Scott Boulevard, so the kids from the trailer parks there, they're going up to Hoover.
Well, Scott Boulevard has, not on their side all the way. Not all the way, but there's some there.
Right, but then to go, once you get on, once you turn the corner.
Right, right, yeah, exactly, there's not...
And I know they're doing the road rebuild, and so I think that's an excellent opportunity for us to really advocate when they're doing the road rebuild, to make sure that it's pedestrian friendly as they do that.
The other one on that piece is whatever we can do to advocate for a crossing guard at Penn across to that ice cream in the rec center. You know, that's a pretty...
Oh, can't see if they want it, it's too small.
Yeah.
They're redoing an interception up there, so it will be a little better, but I agree.
Does cities provide those crossing guards?
Cities do, yep, they, we tend to, I was going to use the word game, that's something, we tend, the challenge that we have is they tend to tell us, this is how many chess pieces there are, where would you like to put them, not, we need more chess pieces on the board.
One positive to the Lemmy change is that the crossing guard moved from the school to Court Street and Scott Boulevard, so if all the kids are east of Scott Boulevard, go to New Hoover, that crossing guard can go back to the school, which is what, if you remember last year when it got changed, there was a lot of...
And one of the problems of Penn is, you know, with Liberty expanding, you're going to have much more youth traffic.
Yes.
All going through there, and young drivers and that, and that's a concern with Penn Street for safety.
There's really nice sidewalk, really nice bike path that goes along that way, so, not that it's not a concern, but that...
They always have the option.
For walking and biking, it's great path, white sidewalk. One thing I was going to say that hasn't been discussed, I really like that Alexander is only going to be at, I think, fifty-five percent capacity.
I think all the capacity, I mean, all the capacity numbers improved.
And I apologize, I didn't share that with you, one of the things that we did is we looked at those high-need buildings, and if you'll notice that they look very similar now in terms of capacity utilization, so we were really deliberate when we looked at that. So one of the things that's different is, and we did this with Wood, it may be a little easier to see it on this map. So we already knew that we were trying to reduce Alexander, so that it fit inside the building, so we took Lakewood and moved it out. These kids were already going to go, right, because of the decision, we moved, you can see the red line, we moved those kids into Wood, which then made Wood really crowded, so on the new map, essentially we took the students here, so this is Paddock Circle, Bon Air, the old Rose Oaks, and we moved those to New Hoover, we left this piece here, recognizing that it's a convenience, new development when the road comes through. We left that in Wood, because one of the hopes is that as that area develops, that that might help us with demographics, but not overcrowded. So we were really deliberate when we went back through and looked at those attendance areas to say, can we park them in that, and this is the lowest one, can we park them in that sixty percent range, recognizing that with Ram, that actually the use capacity we talked about last time is smaller than that. So this way we don't have kids in classrooms in the library or things like that, and just try to move that out. So you see that now at Twain, at Alexander, at Wood, at Kirkwood, is to try to get down to that percentage utilization, recognizing that that's the fire code capacity, not the use capacity.
Well, and I think it sets them up great to be a magnet school.
Sure.
I mean, they've got, we can get kids that want to attend there.
Yeah, and there's room.
There's room, nobody has to move out.
And it just gives you...
And Alexander's is still kind of hold and true, I think the last, one time we talked about the upper grades, like the higher SES.
It's a pyramid, when you look at the... It's a pyramid, when you look at the, the low SES numbers, I, we have, or actually, I guess, an inverted pyramid, if you looked at it like that. There are far fewer low SES kids at the upper, or lower grade levels than there are at the upper grade levels. So we think that that number is going to improve when you look at the school as a whole over the course of the next two, three, four years. And part of that's the development that's going on, because you had a lot of young families that moved into the new development, and their kids are just starting to go to school, so we're just starting to see that change.
Yeah, so I really like how that positions us for future decisions without having to disrupt kids again.
Yeah.
Listen, I, as a math nerd, I was looking at current state and then with previous iterations of maps and the current one. And what I have noticed, it kind of broke it down by, you know, the number of schools that were over seventy, over sixty, fifty, so on and so forth, and down below ten. And from current to the first iterate, well, not even wasn't the first iteration, but the previous iteration, we moved one school from seventy to the sixties, one, right? And we took kind of the twenty, thirty, forty range, so kind of on either side of our average, we went from nine to ten schools. The current, well, three's one, we moved three schools from seventies down into the sixties and have jumped up to twelve schools that are in the-
Right, yeah.
So I think it's a very tangible change.
There are fewer outliers and more in the sweet spot, right?
So you've got fewer outliers out there.
And I think we accomplish that when doing, leaving some kids alone and not moving, right? That's a win-win.
We did, we did some targeted changes, I think, really, that-
And the voluntary transfer, I think, helps us just.
Yeah, amplifies it, yeah.
So the Kirkwood change is something we haven't discussed. I personally think it's a good move. I asked JP, he thought it was a good move.
I do, too, yes, I do.
Oh, not Kirkwood.
It's, it would be on the WICOM.
It's on the WICOM, yeah.
So it's this group down here?
Yeah.
And again, I think one of the things that's a little deceiving when you look at this is remember that this is, this piece is already leaving.
Right.
Right, so now are the Kirkwood attendance areas?
I think it helps Kirkwood with their numbers, capacity-wise.
Capacity-wise, too, that's huge.
And SES.
And we get a, you know, because last time the bump in WICOM wasn't, it was one percent, and this isn't tremendous, but it's, it's more than what.
And we just struggle with those islands, whether they're islands of affluence or islands of poverty.
And it just, and that's where, you know, people say, why aren't you moving, you know, wealthy kids? It's like, because it just doesn't, places like that.
Part of it goes back to what Lori just said, if you, if you wanna move affluence into poverty, you have to move a lot of poverty out to get those schools right sides, add lines up.
And then you get too close to Kirkwood.
That's a real burden on, on students and their families.
And that chunk is getting, were they getting bused?
I don't think they're getting attendance.
No, they're not. I don't think they are, but they'll be far enough away now, I believe. I'll have to go back and measure.
I think they would, I think this would be a good move for them in terms of attendance, but we would have to ask them to find out for sure. Because I, I sat in on something at Kirkwood at one point, and I think she said that they have struggles with us kids not having the right winter gear sometimes to make that long of a walk to Kirkwood. So, because it's a pretty long walk.
Just a lot of the chunks like that, that we have crossing, right, we're already getting some sort of crossing, and we're just moving where the bus goes, and this would be an addition.
This could be an additional.
I, I think it is a good move, too. I think numbers-wise, kind of how it all comes out, maybe it's a big reason for it. It's just, that's an additional burden we'll have to assume.
We might be decreasing the bus of Corpus Central, though. The kids south of Highway Six would leave our own bus.
I'll have to check, I think they are.
And they could, that bus could pick up, you know?
Once we know where we're at, we can actually, we have Durham do a demo for us. We've been avoiding it just because they charge us for it. So, once we know what they are, we can start working on doing some optimal bus routing. Okay, so just to make sure, I wanna make sure I got all the right changes so that when I start working on these. So Lucas, First Avenue Court, the Lincoln, I'll make that change with the River Landing and the, what's it, Hundred Acre Wood?
Bridgewater is what it's called now.
All right, now, I'm always gonna think about it as Hundred Acre Wood now. Van Allen, we'll take those students from WICOM back to Van Allen. Weber, we're going to get a breakdown, if I can, by grade level for those students that are gonna go back to Horn. And then let me find out about the Kirkwood and Waukegan situation. Great. Anything else you need?
And just be the kids that are at W, that aren't voluntary.
Yeah, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna try to get a breakdown of, for who lives in that area, who's at Horn, who's at Weber. By grade level.
Yeah.
Bring that back in. So hopefully, it'll just be a couple of columns, be able to look at that.
We're getting, I like that.
We're getting really close.
Was that? Door knocking, who's door knocking?
I volunteer Paul.
So Thursday, we're at Southeast Junior High, aren't we?
Yep, cafeteria.
I better change that, I think I wrote Northwest on my calendar.
And I think we had said the purpose to do the big session instead of just, just so that we walk through the-
Yeah, I guess I would like to hear, because you told me that at Southeast last week, you guys just all had one conversation. We had individual tables at Northwest, and just we might talk to, Lori and I had very different conversations at our tables, it sounds like. So I think that'd be-
I liked the big session, because everyone heard the same thing, everyone had the same questions, they heard the responses. I don't know, it was like they were doing a quick analysis.
I, I like the small tables personally, because I feel like people have an opportunity to really connect and know that they've been heard, instead of like-
Yeah, so people are comfortable speaking.
Well, we did have people come up afterwards, we had specific, you know, I think we probably had fewer people, like my kids, my street in the larger group, I'm trying to figure out.
It is that we, I think we are more successful giving people to move around this time with the voluntary transfer one. Because that one, I had the same, I think I had one person that came from the table, otherwise I'd have seen people all the time with voluntary transfers. This, well, we had more people moving, not everybody, but I didn't talk to everybody more than, but more. I could kind of see it either way.
I think they walked away feeling really heard, just where I got from. They didn't necessarily agree with where we were going, but.
We asked, how many people were there? Minus teachers and staff and others?
We had some teachers and staff, too, but I don't know if we had twenty, it's probably close to twenty.
But I think we had twenty-five or so.
Yeah, I think there was about twenty-five.
Honestly, like here at City, I'm like, who comes?
Okay, with asking the question and then write up rocks and which group you are coming from.
Or do, you know, have a group in the beginning and then break out and say, set a time, and then say, we'll break out at the next time.
And that's how we've oftentimes done it, is we've started with a small group and then we report back to the large group.
Or, yeah.
That was Chris' little thought. Would it be possible to have a large map drawn with the, so that we're not trying to look at each individual one and see where one yellow line?
I will try, it's a different software package that draws the big maps for us. So I don't wanna make a promise without, and I-
It's not at the final product, so if it's not right time.
I think with the fact that this has all the schools in it, because it was a-
That was something I heard loud and clear from parents.
I spent the first half of that last meeting explaining. They realized there's already changes, and we're looking at changes to the changes.
Yep.
So there might not be changes in this thing, but you will possibly have changes already that I can't show you, because I have-
Well, when we started out, we had, I had the current boundaries, big map on the screen. And then I flipped it over to the nineteen-twenty, and then we kind of walked through some of the changes in that night. Like, here's the nineteen-twenty mapping, here's the area we're talking about changing.
I, I did that, too, but it, because we were in small groups, it wasn't, let me present this to everybody. It was, I was trying to show specific people the thing.
Yeah, right, yeah, we just had that, too, and everyone had, almost everyone had.
How big, how big can you print the ones?
Good question. I will find out.
Because if you were to take those and piece them together, you're-
Well, and what would be nice about that is if, if we can get it online, then we can zoom in, you know? Because it's so hard, I mean, like the Lemmy map in particular, it's so hard to see it.
Yeah, because of Breckenridge down there, it puts it on a goofy scale.
Not, not all the maps are at the same scale, and I think that's what makes it hard, that boundary lines.
And I know it's not up right now, but if you remember, one of the things that I did was I took them all and combined them into a file. So if you look, if you have Board docs up right now and you're looking at it, the next item on the agenda is maps, historical listing. So that's actually those screenshots. So those are a lot easier, like if you were to open one of those up right now, and, and your point about being able to blow those up, you know, you hit that plus sign, you can drill in there pretty far, and the resolution stays pretty good on that. So that's another thing that I could do, is I could make a file of these. So that if people wanna see a specific map, whether you have your computer at your table, or we could pull it up on the screen. So, you know, it's kind of like, you can, you can drill in pretty far on that. But that's in that, that's in that header on the, on Board docs, it says historical maps. And so I had loaded those for each of the ones that we'd done, not as part of the PowerPoint, because that's where they get real kind of shrinky and hard to see. So these are a little bit easier to blow up. So I could do that for these, too, if that would help.
That'd be a good idea, yeah.
Then you'll have all twenty of them, I mean, it'll be a big, long file I have to scroll through, but I can put all of them on.
I will say, just reporting back on the feedback, that two things I heard, some real big concerns or unknowns about BASP. And it's, it's hard to answer that, because you don't have the answers, and, you know, some of the programs are contracted, some of them are parent-run.
Right.
Particularly the New Hoover, a lot of questions, not, not at this forum, but I've heard them from the community, not knowing what's going to be the format there. And then also, I-
Can we address that one in our meeting a little bit, actually?
Yeah, and then a lot of questions about parenting. A lot of questions about parenting at my table. So wanting to know, you know, when are we gonna decide?
Let's get this done, and then we can-
Why we're not deciding now before we do the boundaries, you know, just all of that, so.
I think one of those questions in our section, too, and I think the response we made was, we knew we couldn't implement parenting in nineteen-twenty. We felt a sense of urgency, we're making some shift to support our students effectively in nineteen-twenty. That's why we're moving in a sense of urgency, because we got complaints that we weren't long to pass, and we weren't communicating enough, and, you know, those sorts of things. And we just wanted to hunt a whole year, and I'll make some changes to improve the environments for students, and that's what we're moving. And why we're doing every changes as opposed to focusing on their stores, I mean, that's how we respond.
Is there anything, Amy, from your perspective, that we could say about BASP's? Because I'm sure we'll hear that this weekend, and we could put them out on the spot.
Yeah, well, like the Hoover one, they have, you haven't sent out the RFP yet, right?
We have, actually, just today.
Just went out.
Just today, Hoover and Grant.
And it wasn't out, so that's what we told them, and then we also talked a lot about the transition team.
Yeah.
And so we referred them back to not only you, but the elementary principals to work with that team. And we actually had one teacher that is on that team, so he was able to answer some of those questions for them, and I think that helped.
So the RFPs went out today for both of those buildings, and they're due back by December third. And then we hope to bring that recommendation to the board at the board meeting in December. So all of that timing should be good.
And they'll have, like, totally open slots, so like, that would be a great situation.
That will, yeah.
But a lot of concern for people that I waited on a waiting list for two years, I got in, now you're switching my school.
Yeah.
Am I gonna be on a waiting list?
The ones that I heard in that realm are the ones we just changed and they get to stay at the one. Like, I think this solved their problems, this stuff we changed. Because they were concerned about all of the boundaries, well, part of that was the BASP. So specifically, I heard from the, kind of the North Coral Central folks that were moving, and the Van Allen folks. And so the changes helped to that as well, at least the ones that were open. I can definitely see the new schools opening. I know, having lived through that, it was, it was a very anxious time.
Yeah.
And, you know, even when we found out, you know, that Garner was opening their BASP program through the North City Rec Center, their process was, I showed up at the rec center at about four in the morning, and got in a line, and I was the first person on the waiting list.
Oh.
Having shown up at four in the morning. And it wasn't until they saw how much interest there was that they say, you know what, maybe we need a bigger program. And so I feel that pain, because it was really scary at the time. So finding that stuff out for those new schools is-
I know it's not real popular, but I know that one of the things that I have shared in the past is that that's a good argument for moving away from an independent decentralized BASP program to a centralized, whether it's district-run or subcontracted to a single entity, that there's a benefit to doing that. Which I know is not real popular, especially for those really successful parent-run programs. But we have run into the past where a director leaves mid-year and the parents panic and come to us and say, we don't know what to do now, we can't find a director, and it's in the middle of the year, and I need someone tomorrow who's DHS certified and everything else, and now what do we do? So that might be food for long-term conversation.
I've had, I'd be up for that conversation.
Also, for your awareness, Joan and, Joan Vandenberg, Amy Muntier have a meeting set up with BASP directors on November twelfth. And for part of that meeting, I'm gonna go in and talk about zones and potential possibilities and brainstorm with them through some things, so.
And I know you don't see this, so I'll just leave this with you. Amy's got like a five-thousand-page document right now, which is the transition plan and the communication plan that goes with it. And so she was sharing that with the elementary principals today, with the idea being to try to get out in front of that and try to do all the gap analysis we can now, so that as soon as the board makes a decision, we can hit the ground running and we have the ability to communicate regularly. Amy's plan has, we use multiple modalities, and we're gonna tag them every month, so that people hear it over and over and over again. So that there's lots of opportunity to have information in parents' hands as quickly as possible and as often as possible, through as many means as possible.
So when this, when we vote on this, and then you are gonna send out letters in January, right, as the plan for like voluntary transfers and transportation and all that stuff on it, so like, will these specifically be targeted at the families that will be changed?
That, that's a bit of conversation that we're having. So initially, I was thinking, you know, send out the zones, district, new district maps that are developed, the homeschool look-up, make people aware, outline what those transition opportunities are gonna look like for availability for families and students. But then after we did the voluntary transfer piece, too, that's gonna impact families above and beyond just those impacted by the attendance zones. So that's when I really got to thinking about having this whole set of communication around just elementary things to be aware of for, for nineteen-twenty now. Like Steve said, that document has gotten pretty lengthy, so we need to figure out how much of it we're parsing out. Do we, is that the best route to go with just giving all, you know, a bunch of information at once? Do we parse it out just for those families? All of those things, I think, are still to be discussed, but I think we could hit it in multiple ways. For example, in this long document that I have going, there's several deadlines in there. Certainly, I think we should peel out things a month ahead of that due date and be sending that, you know, regularly through Blackboard Connect. Krista and I have talked about different ways, you know, is it a brochure, is it a kind of a legal-sized paper where it has all these? We make it kind of look like a scroll, just something, so we're getting it out there in a variety of formats, paper, Blackboard Connect, certainly sitting on the district website. Whatever we do, you know, we heard log and cleared, we have to make sure that we've got the ability to have those things translated as well.
Just concerned with, to make sure that we actually do get the people that have a different zone than what they thought they were going to have, because- I kind of see it as you send out this global thing, and then you have a target.
And then you have a target that says, you should pay very close attention to this part of that previous email, because you may have been told you were changing schools, and now you're not, or you're changing schools to a different school, or, you know.
Or you were changing, now you are.
You have all of it in one spot, but then you tell people. Yeah, because I can tell you that, when I, when I go to the Lemmy PTA meetings and they will ask-
Yeah, because I can tell you that, when I, when I go to the Lemmy PTA meetings and they will ask me at every meeting, you know, can you give a board update, and I will specifically say, you know, pay attention that these two areas are scheduled to go one way, but we're talking about making them go the other way, so, uh, granted, that's, whatever it is that's there, but just trying to make sure it's targets and those people are paying attention.
Right. And that's one of the reasons that Amy was talking this through the building principals today, is because we wanna make sure that the building principals are active, members of this transition communications team, because they can, they're gonna see these parents every day. And they're gonna know, hey, you may not know about this, so I'm gonna talk to you and I'm gonna talk to you, and I know you're reading the email and I know you get voicemail messages, but you two need some little extra TLC as part of that.
And there, still needs to be communication to secondary?
Yes, we haven't touched secondary yet. We just thought we'd get this one tackled first. Yep.
I don't think that's on, anybody who currently has a secondary child that lives in any of those neighborhoods that are going to change their secondary, Peter Penny, I don't think this is on their radar at all.
Not even at all.
And we currently have a very small restricted voluntary transfer at the secondary levels going into, whether you like, everything else is-
So, they would have the opportunity-
Space available, whatever, but-
Go back if they need to.
Maybe, but the one that I'm thinking of, you know, moving Boston away, now, that they're, to go to the school they think they're gonna go to would be voluntary transferring into Liberty, which is the one they can't do.
Yeah. So- Matt actually asked about that, I know he left, uh, at a family thing he had to go to, but, um, one of the things that he said is, will we be then looking at voluntary transfer at the secondary level, whether it's restricted or unrestricted? But make sure that that's codified in such a way that we've done it at the elementary level, so it's at least clear to folks how that works. And I know Scott Kibby's made the pitch to me that, hey, when our addition is open, are you going to open us back up? Because then we'll be similarly situated geographically, you know, uh, and capacity-wise with the other schools. I said, to be de, TBD, to be determined later, so.
Yeah, I, I would say on that, we're, we're either, I think we need to be uniform there, right? We're either going to talk about closing voluntary transfer, 'cause there's reasons to do that.
Yep.
Or if it's open in City and West, and there's the space of Liberty, it should be open there too, right?
Right.
But that conversation, I think, has to be had at someone's, and it's just, it's going to affect kids soon, right?
And all six secondary principals have said that the good news is that they understand, they support uniformity and they understand going either direction. So, I don't think we're going to necessarily get an enormous amount of pushback which, which way we go. I think they would just like to see a determination that there's a uniformity across all, all six schools.
Well, I'm just saying, yes, the voluntary transfer part, I'm just saying, you're gonna have an eighth grader right now, right? That next year, they think they're going to Liberty, and they're gonna find out-
We zone them with that.
At some point this year, the next year, they're not going to, you know, like, that's-
There's, yeah, there's some that, you know, go to West and City.
There is, I'm just saying, I-
I think what we can do is after you get some final determinations made, we can give you those numbers too.
Yeah, I think we have to take that up pretty much as a net, right, after we, we determine this and then we see how that impacts those secondary kids.
And you can stop coming, those are these, Matt can start coming.
Yeah, I don't know that necessarily changes anything for the secondary kids, but it definitely-
Well, we need to communicate.
Communicated.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
That be the pattern?
Yeah.
Maybe it does change it, different conversation.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna affect this, this particular decision, but it will impact those kids and families.
You're gonna have to tell me.
Second.
I got this. Thursday night at six o'clock, summer, summer, four 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 o'clock, summer,